Thank you for coming tonight, everyone. I remind the agenda is to approve the minutes from November 10th, 2025 regular meeting. I get a motion started, please.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from November 10th.
You have a second? You have a second?
I'll take it.
Second by Ricky. Okay. Any discussion, corrections on it? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion of approving the minutes from November 10th, 2025 signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried, thank you. Item 1B, additions to the agenda. Any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Item 1C, welcome again, comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Any comments? Again, another opportunity at the end about commenting about anything if you like. Thank you for coming. Okay. Number two, student representative. Dan, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin by thanking the superintendent for his access to technology. I believe she'll be speaking more about that in the report tonight. I'll be going back to our previous reporting style because mine and I didn't have any major issues that we wanted to deal with or talk about. So last week in February, the high school took part in a really fun competition where each class decorated their classroom door with a fort to graduate. I'm not sure my class will take first place just because we're small and I don't think I'm the most creative person, but we're still very able to great way to learn about our goals as students while having a great time. And that'll be continuing over the next month or two. There's a reward for the first place. Door, classroom, I believe. Winter sports kicked off last week as well, and the basketball teams had their scrimmage tonight, which went well considering it was our first school in St. Louis. High school's winter concert is tomorrow, and I know many of you are probably looking forward to it. On the student council, we recently held a food drive during Thanksgiving. It wasn't quite as successful as the middle schools. They raised $200 and collected 500 candy, but we were still proud of that we made. And finally, my classmates did a homecoming dance in the number which we're now able to show on fundraiser and really fun night for everyone.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dan? That was the same question I ask you all the time, my cell phone's gone. My school.
They're gone.
His own? Okay, you don't have to answer any more than that. Okay, moving to item three, chairperson's report. First thing I'd like to mention is beginning in January, Dave Gilroy, who was here tonight, will be joining the Board of Education. And also, at our first meeting in January, the board will be picking new board officers, chair, vice chair, and secretary. And also, we'll be then working on committee assignments for next year. I also went with Suzanne to the CAVE CAPS conference a couple of weeks ago down in Mystic. It was really eye-opening. I thought it was worthwhile, and I guess I'd like to thank all of you on the Board of Ed because all I hear is how board events fight with each other all the time and vote down political lines. And we've got a stable board, and I think a terrific school system, and a terrific new leader. So that made us feel good. But sometimes I don't like going to these things because I see the cost and I look at the value. And I think I've come out with a lot of legal stuff that we pick up there that we don't know that's worthwhile. But one thing that I picked up that the board may be real happy about, and we spent a lot of time with the Canton Chair, Canton Superintendent, and a few others, bigger district than us. And like us, we have a lot of nights, we have meetings that aren't our business meetings. Canton has one business meeting a month. Their board meets once a month for a business meeting. So that's something we'd like to look at doing. I think in the past, sometimes I felt we were breaking records to be done in 25 minutes. But I hate to drag you out here for 25 minutes if we could just come out once a month and maybe spend an hour and get it all done at once. But we're looking at what we expect from board members in committees you're involved with and everything else, that maybe our business meetings, we could try to narrow them down and learn a little better about how Canton is making it work. And they say it works very well. I mean, I think we realize most of our work is done in our committees anyway. So if we can do that with Suzanne leading us, it might give you a night off or give you a night to have another meeting or some other committee meeting. But that's something we looked at. But it's really interesting to be able to go there and rub elbows with other people. I think Suzanne and I looked at some things that we can actually compete for next year to be recognized as a Board of Education for East Granby. And I look at CAVE and I look at what we spend for CAVE. It's an extremely valuable resource because like Suzanne was talking to budget, we don't have a lot of people working here. So we need to know what's going on. And sometimes it's best when you're knowledgeable yourself and get some of this information. So the networking part of it and the information they gave us, I think, was worthwhile for all board members because everyone's going through similar things, except maybe we're not as bad, which is good. Money-wise, I think we'd like to be better off, but that's a huge issue everywhere with education. So that's it. That worked extremely well. And my last thing is, I'd like to call up a member, John Welsh. Stand, please. John Welsh has spent 10 years on the Board of Education in East Granby. Spent many years on the zoning board in East Granby. I think every decision he's made on any board or group he's been involved with has been for the best of the community. In recognition of the dedication and commitment to the East Granby community, including a total of 10 years on the East Granby Board of Education, serving one year as the vice chairman of the board, John Welsh has given this award for his leadership, contributions, and service to the East Granby Public Schools, November 2025. John will be leaving us in December. We'll miss him. Thanks.
And this means I can stay home Wednesday night, Bob?
Not Wednesday night. No, no, no. The end of December here, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the end of my report, and we'll go to item four, superintendent's report.
Hey. Thank you, and thank you so much, John, as well. It's, I just got here. Okay. All right. So my actual report is pretty short tonight, and what I want to go through is, the first thing I'd like to speak about is our strategic planning update. One of the things that is so fun about this work is the meeting and interacting with more and more people in our community and also just watching our students get involved. So one of the things that I was able to do, as I mentioned in our budget meeting, was get, finally, get into some classrooms, almost 80% of middle and high school classrooms last week, where we are just to walk in, drop in, five minutes, say hello, look at and see what was going on in the class, and leave each of the teachers a personalized note about, you know, what was really standing out as really good practice. I cannot tell you. It was very emotional for me because we have the most incredible, engaged, completely ready student body that I've ever seen in my 20-plus years as an educator. And to walk out, understanding that we're ready for anything that we're going to do and do it together as a team is just, was a beautiful thing, and I wanted to share that with the board. Our teachers are active in teaching. Our leaders, as we talked about, are, we're happy to get into classrooms and have that sort of like, let's go together and walk through. And I really believe that we can start utilizing five-minute walk-ins, five-minute drop-ins as something I learned at CAVE CAPS that East Con does and Suffield does. That really is a great practice that we can use moving forward. And that is part of our high-quality teaching and learning that we'll put into our strategic planning. So that's a piece of that. In terms of our actual workshops, I'm going to report out on our Stone Soup Summit that we had a few weeks back. The reason is because we canceled our last meeting, and also, the workshop we just had was a little low attendance because I think of the snow day, it just kind of pushed everybody off, but it's an important one. So we're actually going to redo it in our next one. Just so everybody's aware, when we made the workshops, there was that last one that really doesn't have a plan, if you'll look at it. That was for in case we had to move one up. So I think that that's what we're planning on doing. But in our Stone Soup Summit, for those of you that weren't able to get here, we all read a small story. I don't know if you're aware of the Stone Soup story. And what we did was each of the different tables was about how we want to contribute. So table one was our partnerships, our carrots, and we had shared spaces as potatoes, and we had funding ideas as onions, and then we had all kinds of spices. After that, we had a really good turnout, and after we looked at all everybody's ideas, they broke down to, in terms of partnerships, many in our community have a strong interest in trades, farms, childcare, medical, police, and fire. There's a desire for internships, apprentices, real-world learning. And then there's businesses and alumni eager in our area to participate with us and create programming. In terms of shared spaces, there was enormous support for shared-use facilities between community and schools. We have interest in adult ed in terms of enrichment, evening classes, and shared gyms and kitchens. Community wants to be able to access and utilize school spaces, and also, we want to be able to interact with the community. Funding ideas was onion, and it sort of felt like a little like an onion because it was very limited suggestions, as is with funding. We've got low confidence in this area overall. I think people are really, you know, there's a lot to think about. There were mentions of sponsorships, grants, and donor naming, and a community message which was loud and clear, "We'll participate, you guide funding." I have a sticky that said that. Yeah, the spices were our spirit and our strength, which I really liked. There were ideas about strong town pride and multi-generational ties, tradition and storytelling that we want to pull through, who we are in East Granby, leaders, excellent leaders. We want to make sure that our story continues in our children. Interest in senior and student connections, which I thought was a really beautiful thing and said more than once, and culture of showing up and helping, which we know that we do already. So just giving more of a system around that. The key takeaways and trends were partnership energy is high, shared campus concept is popular, people are our strongest resource, funding knowledge is low, and climate is hopeful and ready. And so those are the key takeaways from the Stone Soup Summit. For what's next, we're inviting you to our next strategic planning workshop. Our workshop four will be a rerun. Actually, it's workshop five, but it will be a four rerun. Truth and Numbers, Wednesday, January 7th at 6:30 PM in the community center. We've moved them there. And then our last one will be workshop What Matters Most? And that will be Thursday, January 22nd at 6:30 PM in the community center. And that is where, as a community, we're going to take the next five years, look at all the things that we've talked about, and prioritize them. So then, no, we want to do all of this, what happens in year one, what happens in year two. We're going to work that together, almost like, I keep thinking in my head, like those felt puzzles that you put, like the weather. So that is the update for our strategic planning. We are, I also wanted to let you know to make sure that we get more voices. Lisa and I are creating a set of mirrored Google Town Hall meetings, Google Meet, so that anybody that needs to zoom in, or I say zoom, Google Meet in, will be able to. Those will be sent out as invitations. They'll have the same exact type of workshop feel. I'll talk a little bit more just to walk people through it in small groups, but we'll make sure everybody that hasn't had a chance to participate can. For those of you that were only able to get to one or two, you can just pop into the ones that you didn't actually get to attend. So I wanted to let everyone know there'll be plenty of opportunities for people to be able to participate in that. And so that is it for where we are with our strategic planning workshops. And now I think I am going to speak to the, oh, I lost my agenda here. Here it is. Actually, I'm going to give it to Josh for your update on student support services, collaboration with Suffield. Mr. Martin, would you mind giving us a short update?
Sure. So earlier last month, the directors of Suffield, East Granby, Grand Media, and Winter Lots met with an architect firm that was identified by Suffield, and we reviewed the current plans, talked about kind of the key needs and student demographics that we're seeing served in a program like we've been discussing. And there's lots of questions that came from the firm about what things that we need to consider. It's a firm that's, I don't have the name of it in my head right now, but it's a firm that's very experienced with building school programs and buildings. And so they were just waiting for them to kind of put all of our information into a plan and to present it back up with, to back to, present it back to us. I double-checked with Suffield to make sure that I wasn't missing anything, but that's where we're just in a waiting game right now for the firm to return. Any questions?
Is there a timeline of when you expect that to come back?
I don't have a timeline. I know timeline for kind of getting the program started would be like this coming August. So there is a timeline for that. I don't have a timeline for when we'll get planning the plans back. We started off, there was a rough sketch out from the firm initially, just based upon really initial information and the overall layout of the current building. But we asked them to kind of look at kind of future planning, do, like, give us a plan if we wanted to build out a little bit more to include more students, or what it would look like to build play spaces for younger students.
Can you remind me again which Suffield campus you're talking about adapting for this new physical space?
Sure. It is adjacent to the Town Hall complex.
Okay.
It's a one-story building. If you're looking at the Town Hall, it's immediately to the right of it.
Was it the old middle school, maybe?
It's not, it's not on a school.
Separate campus.
It's a separate campus.
Right next to it, it's a small building. It looks, it's deceiving. It's bigger than the inside.
Yes.
Like the TARDIS.
And preliminary negotiations, I know before you were talking about there's going to be a percentage that each district pitches in to help build the facility. There're going to be like a minimum of years that they can't kick us out?
So we're still discussing and whether or not it's even feel like, I mean, I think our position is that they're going to own the building, so like, we should be looking at a cost to run and just like-
Almost like a lease fee for us, is it?
And breaking it even so that, so that they're not, they're not taking in income. They're looking at, here's, here's the cost to run the facility. We're going to divide it equally among the sending districts by student population, and that's, that's what the tuition's going to be. And then if we're looking at districts outside of our consortium, then we would charge an overhead fee as well to that to maybe bring down our costs.
So the consortium will cover operating, but Suffield's mostly covering capital?
So, because they're going to own the building, yes.
Is it set in stone that it's in Suffield, or is there still open talks that maybe something could be in East Granby, or as we're talking about revitalizing in the strategic plan, if there was something that fit in there that could accommodate consortium? Is this set in stone that Suffield will host it?
So I think for this type of program right now, yes. But, but there are lots of opportunities and different types of programs that they were really uniquely situated right down Route 20 to be able to host something if facilities come available.
So just to piggyback sort of on that, one of the things is that the programming for special education students is, is so wide, right? There's different types of programs for different types of students. This particular program would be for our students that the key is really to get them also back into our, into our spaces. So I, as, I really do think that this is an opportunity for us to start a larger consortium around many different things, so that if that's serving that one small population with the idea of our students being able to re-enter the classrooms. There's other things that we see every day in terms of larger costs that we think down the road, we could actually also put our heads together, be innovative, and be able to serve the larger region as we start to build out what that looks like. So this is a really great opportunity for a subset of our students that we want to see succeed and be back in our spaces. So that's what's really exciting to me about this particular program.
Is it truly considered a shared space, or would the students, if they're residents of East Granby attending this special center, would they be considered outplacement for statistics and budgeting?
So I think statistics and budgeting, there would be an added district placement.
I'd like to find a way to keep as many kids in district as possible.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. But I think when we're looking at, one of the challenges with replacement is the, is the cost, right? So I mean, which costs are like anywhere from like $400 to $500 a day.
Kind of goes back to your question, too.
Right. But, and then finding ways of building programs in district to support students, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you, Josh. So our, my last point for this evening is a follow-up on high school students' technology regulations and usage. So with speaking with our high school principal and with our director of IT, the decision has been really made that we think that we can open up very carefully and with scaffolds put in place to help teachers as well, our Gemini services, at least for AI, to our 11th and 12th graders. So that's something that we're deeply considering. There will be, we're going to, our high school principal will speak to the staff because it's not like, we talked about that a little, it's not like just a quick changeover. We need to understand how all of that's going to impact other things, but at least to have the ability with that service, which I'm not sure if the board knows, but because Gemini is part of our Google workspace, it is safe with our FERPA and HIPAA laws. So it is actually why we're going to be saying in the district, we want to make sure that that is what is being used. I know people have all of their defined ones, but as part of our workspace, this one's the safest bet for us. That being said, the other thing that we are doing is I'm working with Steve Mosher to think about how, which sites we want to make sure that our students are able to access. And so to do that, we wanted to make sure that the students let us know. So in the last short meeting of the superintendent's Student Advisory Council, we were discussing that, and it was a task that was given, to think through the sites that those students really wanted to have access to. And then I will send that list to Tony, our high school principal, and to Steve, and to Patrick, to just talk about, is this seem good and are we good to go? So talks are in session, and I think we're moving forward, and we're very grateful for our students to bring this up. And for those of you that weren't able to view this whole situation, it was brought to our attention by our wonderful student representatives, that there's a disconnect between being not able to go to many of the sites to research things because of heavy control of the internet, which we know is good and safe for younger students, and also not having the ability to utilize any type of AI tool, even if it's safe and having it with the, with the, our Google workspace. Because when our students then are going off to college, they're at a disadvantage. So I had a student go to college this year, my last one, and then, and she had had the ability to have research, and she had had the ability to use those tools. But one of the things I keep thinking about with all the projects she's doing and being asked to do, and I have to hear about all of them, and I'm so glad, but still, I want to make sure that our students, as they brought to us, especially in the 11th and 12th grade, are not going to be in a world where they haven't been able to learn about digital media by using it, and also haven't been able to look into and learn how to utilize AI, which actually will leave them not as prepared as students that are, that are there. So it's a good conversation. It's a scary conversation, but it's something I think was brought with respect, and we're grateful. We're going to look at it for 11th and 12th. I'm sure it's going to be a thing. And all we need to do is get the list of sites to make sure that we all look at it and see if there's any parameters we want to put on it, but I think it's good.
I will make a note that when Geometry Dash shows up on that list, it has nothing to do with geometry.
Okay, I don't know this, but I will make a list. Oh, no. Okay. Now you've got me nervous, Drew. Okay, and now I have to look it up on my way home. No, I don't want to. Okay, noted. Anything else from anyone about this particular concern? Really, again, grateful because I don't think, I don't think sometimes we don't see it from that perspective, and it was super important to be able to see it. We're very grateful to you.
And thank you to Dan, our student rep, for bringing it to our attention a couple meetings ago, right?
Yeah. Having a shared building, middle school and high school, as far as technology infrastructure, are they split on separate networks already, or do they share the same network, being the same building? I'm just curious.
So I have to look at the switches, maybe, because we have network switches that would tell us that, so I'm not exactly sure. I'm thinking it's the same one. The issue, though, with the, we're still trying to work out if I could, if I, I'm thinking about Steve's email to me. He was talking about granularity in the filtering of certain sites. And I think that there is a way to do that for the higher-level classes. There's something where we have a problem with, but they're looking at that. So we'll have more. This isn't the last update. Once we know, have the list of sites, and once we know that the AI has been figured, again, needing to figure out what that looks like in terms of homework and things like that, so we're there, we're having those talks. I'll make sure that you guys have an entire list of the sites and how AI would be utilized by our students, but it's really important to give them the opportunity to learn.
Okay, you have anything else? Thank you, Suzanne.
Okay, you're welcome. Let me know.
Okay, moving on, item five, recommended actions. Can I get a motion to approve the use of non-lapsing funds for, we actually were changing to $16,100 to purchase boiler parts, and then we'll talk about it. You have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve use of non-lapsing funds for $16,000 to purchase the, $16,100 to purchase the boiler.
Yeah, the reason to let the board know, I think the real bill's $16,056, so that's why we're adding $100 to it. Okay? Drew with the motion, or a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Amanda with a second. Discussion, questions?
Hold the boiler.
Which boiler?
It's the East Granby High School Heating System Air Separator Replacement Proposal. They've been looked at it, and they said that they need to furnish and install new tacos, six-inch air separator, seven-inch gasket, miscellaneous piping materials, vacuum separator and drain, pressurized purge and check for leaks. This is all over my head, but F and F is the one that came in and did it, and they said this is, even then Ray came back and said this is something we need to do. And it's a 16-week lead time work part, so. And it's not like they don't have the key, but needs to be replaced. So that's why they wanted us to do it this year. So, once it's done, going non-lapse.
Any questions or comments for the board? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried, thank you. 5B, can I get a motion to approve the high school HVAC project 040-001 HVACN? I think Drew, you've got that right?
Yes. I'll approve the high school HVAC project 040-001 HVACN as complete.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Discussion for that motion, or questions?
So let me just make sure, so that the whole final project cost was $809,049.53. The town is eligible for a total reimbursement of $331,522.39, which is approximately 41% reimbursement rate. The town already received $269,590.92. Once we send this into the state, they'll receive an additional final payment of $61,931.47.
We're lucky we got a state grant for that.
Yes.
Very lucky.
What were you approving exactly?
That closure. You're putting-
You're closing the project.
Closing the project. Your approval has, it's closed.
And everything pretty much stayed-
Close as complete. It's closed as completed.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried, thank you. Item D, approve Board of Education meeting calendar 2026. You got a motion?
Let's see.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Finance, I put an extra there. I'm sorry. Approve the 2025 financial report. I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the November 2025 financial report.
You have a motion, second? Second, Rick. Okay, go ahead, Mary.
Okay, so as you're aware, the IRS selected our 2023 planning tactic term review. The process was temporarily paused due to the government shutdown. However, we received requests for additional items, which were submitted December 3rd. So now we're waiting for another follow-up from them. So hopefully that was the last item that they asked for, but it's still-
So hopefully that was the last item that they asked for, but it's still open until next year. Close it. On the financials, you have the November 2025 financials. I want you to know that objects 330, 561, and 563, those are all budget line items that are shown net of our excess cost. So these will, and also, object 330 will also receive reimbursement from our Hartford Core Choice students. These lines will always appear over budget until we receive the excess cost reimbursement in May and the Hartford reimbursement in June. So, so far, we're still okay to be close to zero. We're not over our reimbursement at the moment. So I just want to let you know that. And any other questions on any other line items?
Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving November 2025 financial reports, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you. Motion carried unanimously again. Thank you. Item 5B, approve school calendar 2026, 2027. Can I get a motion?
We're doing a place time meeting.
Oh, man, I'm going behind here. I skipped that already. Approve Board of Education meeting calendar 2026. Item 5D, get a motion to approve our meeting calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Motion. Second.
One minute. Lisa with a second. Okay. Discussion. Right now, we see we do have the same two Mondays every month. Anyone have any difficulties? Could you take a look at it to see?
I have a few thoughts, I don't. The only one I know of, I don't know if it works for the 12th, I know I'm not here for it. If anybody. If we had a few other people not there on the 12th, we could move it to the fifth.
You're talking January?
Yeah.
On your available.
Put the budget meeting on the 12th.
I know if you guys are going to be here when I show up to be in the audience.
And I guess if we, let's, if the board's in agreement, we'll try to make sure the first meeting of the month, and if Suzanne's in agreement, would be, we would try to make that most of our business. We, and then we would cancel the second meeting only if needed, so at least we'd know. I don't want people calling me all the time.
It's already on here. That's what we are supposed to do.
Is it under cancel already?
It's at the top. I hope we signed it like a few years ago, but it never happened.
But it never happened before. But now, you have to see if Canton can do it. That's our goal, or my goal, anyway. Sophia only does one of them, okay.
Very long meeting.
We're trying to vote no against that idea.
We canceled, we canceled some of the stuff.
We've done that before. First year we did it, we did pretty well. Then budget season came, and we needed the two meetings.
Yeah.
I think there are times when you do, but I also think this allows us to make space for those all important, like, meetings that we should be having with the town as well. Like, so we need to think about also the committee meetings. There's a lot of things that we want to make sure that we have lots of time to do. So I do think we could always keep them there, but utilize the first one unless we need them.
And then, just so you all know, I think you're aware of it, if we schedule another meeting, it's called a special meeting. That's the only thing special about it. It's not a secret meeting. I've been accused of secret meetings before. Any meeting that's not on our schedule that we add is a special meeting, any business meeting. Okay. Any other questions, comments about the Board of Ed calendar? All those in favor of the motion, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Thank you. Let me make sure I'm on the right one here. I think it's 5E, approve the school calendar 2026, 2027. I get a motion.
I will move to approve the school calendar 2026, 2027.
Okay, we got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ricky. Okay, discussion.
I see a discrepancy between the Board of Ed calendar and this school calendar. On the Board of Ed calendar, it shows that Veterans Day is a holiday, and it's not on our school calendar. I think it should be a holiday. It's a federal holiday.
Has the veterans group been able to have time to discuss? We've done it two different ways the last two years. Mark?
They've, they've stated in our meetings that they prefer to see it as a holiday, observed holiday.
Okay, that's reasonable. Okay. Any, anyone else?
I support the idea of November 11th being a school holiday, it being a federal holiday, and it observes the veterans of our country.
Absolutely. Anyone see anything else they'd like to bring up?
The in-service days, there's a lot of those in there. Is there a reason for that?
So Mrs. Light was unable to be here tonight. She emailed me and asked me to represent what was discussed at the PDEC meeting. And the points that she asked me to share with the group were that the previous, most recent year having two professional developments on back-to-back Tuesdays in November as of last month was non-ideal, particularly for the primary grades where their special schedules go on a weekly basis. That was challenging, and that they were moving one of the dates because of that. She also wanted to share that some of the non-certified staff was concerned that they had the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off as a unpaid holiday. So I am just sharing that to represent the communication that was given to me from Mrs. Light and her concerns on Wednesday.
I'm sorry, Lisa, I didn't catch your comment about the 25th unpaid holiday. What was that?
Has it, has a.
Yes. So what was, what was shared by Mrs. Light and asked me to relay on behalf of the people that were at the PDEC committee meeting was that some of the non-certified personnel was impacted negatively by not having that as a holiday, that they would be, or have that as a workday, having that as a half-day workday. Again, I'm expressing this on behalf of Mrs. Light, who is unable to be here, and she was.
So basically, they want to work that day, and right now, they do not have that opportunity, correct?
That is my understanding of what she was expressing. They prefer the half-day that they have had in previous years, and that the unpaid holiday was not expected for them, and that was a bit of a challenge. She also expressed that the Election Day professional development was useful so that they could coordinate with other districts. So that has been retained on this calendar as well, with Election Day on November 3rd.
So, I'm sorry, saying that again about the Election Day?
That the Election Day was a useful professional development day so that teachers could coordinate with other teachers in other districts and conduct professional development across districts.
So you're saying keep it as is?
That's what, that was what Mrs. Light communicated, that she.
So have the kids have it off on Election Day.
On Election Day.
Which they always have.
Even though they don't use the schools.
I'm sharing.
I understood. You're the messenger. I'm putting it out there as a challenge.
Well, they do it, like she said, so that, because all the other schools have it off because they do it, that this way the teachers can collaborate with other towns. So they had a really good day this year when they did that.
Right, that's what she was saying.
And this year was the first year we did that.
No, no, we've had Election Day off always.
Yeah, this has been collaborative for a few years.
No, you haven't always had Election Day.
Election Day has not been off, right?
This is the first year that we had it.
Right.
I remember the discussion when we talked about the calendar and about this time.
But the collaborative day must have been another date last year? Because I know we had those with Sophia. Didn't we have those last year with Sophia, the collaborative day?
The issue that was brought to us last year was that we don't have that collaborative with our friends in Sophia, who are Graham, who are in the other districts. And what we agreed to do last year, which was implemented and successfully, evidently.
At least from the Election Day.
Right, for the Election Day, was to make it so that we were in conformance, compliance with the rest of the districts that we, quote-unquote, do business with. And from what everyone says, I guess it worked.
I do, I think I would, I'm just curious about the K5. So I believe that that was just secondary people that were doing that. But I, was it K5 that we're all doing, or did we do Hill? The Hill learning. Yes, no, we're, probably not. I'm breaking all the.
No, I need to hope some of the specials teachers were able to collaborate in other districts. So what did everybody else? The Hill for Literacy. Got it, okay.
And then All Grove, I think it was something, I don't, I think they participated in Hill for Literacy as well. So, again, the collaboration is more with our specials or in our secondary. And I think, you know, I'm really glad that it was positive feedback.
That was this year.
You know, is there a thought, so I'm okay, I'm just trying to compare the two. There's a day in February. This year, it was a Friday, right before February break. So it actually made for a long break. The proposed one is on a Thursday, so you go off, come back just for Friday to go back. Why, why would, why would we do that?
I don't know if any of those things were proposed because there was a specific training that was available on that day. Would be my only guess on why that would be scheduled that way. But I don't have the answer to that question at all. I also wonder why that would be done that way.
Do we want to table this till Marjorie can come in, or?
I think.
Or has the PDEC looked at it again?
Or just have? Just some notes.
You know, what's interesting is I was, I think it's like, it's like a first read.
Yep.
Right? It's almost like a first read, and then we'll take all of the notes and maybe meet again as a team.
You're going to bring notes to Marjorie and the PDEC, which I'm assuming a lot of you are PDEC. So these are just questions to discuss. I, I can't, I'm not sure, but I, now that my kids are older, my life is easier. But I look at this beginning of the year, and if I, as two working parents, if my kids were little, this would cause me like panic, where two half-days, then we come to school, come to school, come to school, then no school, then the weekend, then no school, then no school again on the twelfth, like, I feel like that first week or two of school is so inconsistent. I don't know. I could be wrong. I would be more curious on some parent feedback. I don't know how to get the parent feedback, but I don't know. I can't, I just, I thought of myself years ago, and if I saw that, I would have been like, oh, my God, I need to put my kids in daycare or something. So if that, if there is any wiggle room with that. And then the other one was the week of October 12th. That just seems like another week that could be really hard for a young parent. Again, maybe young parents would say, no, it's totally fine. I just was like, no school, and then all early releases.
Well, the early release on the 14th, 15th, 16th is only high school. But it would still be no school, and then an early release.
So then maybe moving. Because wasn't that one on the 13th? Didn't that used to be the week before? Wasn't that like on?
Any, this is the truth.
Oh, there was like no school. What was that for?
That was young before, so that's.
Oh, that's why. Okay. But I agree with you on that February, and I had that one circled too, as a, I don't know. I, again, it might not, parents might not, might not matter to them. I was just trying to think of the big picture of everybody advocating for.
Along those lines, I would think that if we had another, if this was on the agenda to be discussed at the next meeting, that would also give parents that have thoughts, ideas, and concerns sometimes would put on calendar and share feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
For good, bad, ultimately.
That's a good, that's an interesting point. It may be interesting to get certainly parent feedback. I'd like to see that, because the thing I have is instructional time. I mean, we have now made early dismissal, I think, an hour earlier than it's ever been. So every one of these days, we're now losing an hour of instructional time with the students with any shortened day we have. But number, number two is it looks to me that the PDEC committee wanted to have school on November 11th. Then why don't we close school on November 11th, have PD Day on November 11th? And I would be willing to vote to pay veterans who are in our system the day off that day, on the 11th. And that way, we have school open on the 3rd. And this way, it doesn't impact the kids at all. I think it would be a benefit for the number of veterans we have. For us to give them that day off would be cost-effective for what we'd be saving, just in instructional time. We're losing a lot of instructional time every time we close down early now, whether it's a snow day, or PD Day, or before holiday days. It's just an hour. I'm for it, but it's.
The third was the Election Day where they had the collaborative professional development.
Okay.
So we, I, I see what you're saying, but I feel like maybe we need to throw another day.
Yeah, I would rather see another day with something. But the problem is, I think the Veterans Association wants the 11th. And from what I hear from Mark is, they were surprised it wasn't that way this year. And I don't think that's any of our intent to do that. You know, I thought we were doing what we were, what we were informed to do.
They have the mother.
Professional development.
Yeah, Veterans Day was off. But for the.
The kids have it off.
The kids have it off, but people were.
Well, then why wouldn't we continue that, having a, I mean, the collaborative? Or give a, I can certainly see the collaborative if I see the value in what we're getting out of the collaborative by sending teachers somewhere else and closing school down that day? Or we could do it on the 11th.
The concern was that Lisa presented that the two were just too close together.
Yeah, well, and.
The back-to-back made it.
The concern that Mrs. Light was saying was that because it was the same day of the week, the way that the elementary school schedules run, like, they don't get music on Tuesday, then they're out of music for three weeks.
So maybe it would help that it's different days?
Maybe. That would be a question for PDEC and the professionals that handle.
Yeah.
That would be a Tuesday and a Wednesday, but, you know, again, still in terms of, I think it would be interesting to give more community members a chance to.
So there seems to be a lot of discussion. Why, if somebody wants to come up with a motion of tabling it and send it back to the PDEC committee, and with Suzanne.
Table it and send it back.
I made the original motion. Can I?
You've got the, yeah, back to Lisa with the original motion.
I would like to withdraw the motion.
Okay.
As for now. Table this to the next meeting for further discussion.
And we have a second for that? I'll second you. Okay. Any discussions on that, doing that? Okay, we'll do that. We'll table it and have PDEC take a look at it with Suzanne for the next meeting. Or the meeting, whichever is good for you.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. Thank you. Item eight, agenda items for future meetings, NESDEC projection enrollment data. NESDEC was actually at the conference room. Item seven, thank you for waiting.
Did we, don't we have another policy re, that we put on for future?
It will be as soon as they're ready with it, definitely. I guess we can put it down on here, but I'm sure they're going to be happy to get that on as soon as they can to get that last, we did, didn't we do the first reading?
We did our first reading.
That's why I come on, is that. So maybe it should be on the next agenda then. We've been having it on this agenda.
There's a few new policies that are going to also have to be addressed already. But perhaps we can get out the ones that have already been first read.
Absolutely. We'll pick that on for next meeting for sure. Well, comments from visitors just sat so tentatively tonight. Kind of make a comment. It's warm in here compared to my house.
It's warm.
How about your house?
It was so good.
No comments?
You know, I'm going to. So, prior to our non-certified negotiations that are coming up in January, I wanted to take the opportunity to give you a 60-second Life in the Day of a Secretary. Since it's changed a little bit, since the current, current job descriptions were done in 1895. Wow. Been a little while, so it's just going to breeze right through. So the day starts at about 6:00, 6:30, when we get typically a text from a para or a teacher or somebody that they're going to be out. Asking for substitutes. Mind you, the day doesn't start yet on my hourly contract. But about 6:00 AM, hit the ground running. So you get into school, now you have to figure out the entire day. Who's going where, what's being covered, what child is out, what one-to-one para needs coverage, what needs this, what needs that. Sometimes I'm the nurse, sometimes I'm the principal, sometimes I'm the custodian, sometimes I'm the para, for little pockets of the day. So I feel like a lot of people think secretary is, that's a mom job. Times have changed quite a bit. You're literally everything, from the phone calls, from the teachers saying, I need to go to the bathroom, and there's nobody in here. Can you come cover my class for three minutes? To, I have a student that needs a change of scenery. Can I send them to the office to complete their math work? To, I have a water bottle spill, and Mark's doing the mail. Can you come clean this water bottle spill up? If I need to go to the bathroom, you bet your butt somebody's ringing that doorbell waiting outside for me to come let them in. So, not to mention the phone calls, the emails, the stuff, secretaries have always done. Right, that's on top of everything else. I would welcome anybody to come, talk to any one of us. Because my day is very different than Susan Kulick's day, very different than Donna Matarra's day, very different from Dina's day. But if you do come, please just give me a call, because. But if you do come, please just give me a call, because we don't like unannounced visitors